Okay, at this time, I'd like to entertain a motion to change the order on tonight's agenda and do our open session, the authorization to advertise the amendment to the noise ordinance for public hearing first.
So moved.
And second.
Second.
Seconded, any discussion? Seeing none, although in favor? Motion carries.
Can you hear me? Let's see, are you, you're not Mr. President, are you Mr. Acting President or Mr. Vice President?
Anything you like to call. Dinner time's over, so don't make a difference.
Okay. Basically, we're here tonight, well, I'm here tonight, and the Conservation Commission has requested that you authorize for advertising the proposed amendments to the noise ordinance. This was a draft that you had seen previously. I had been through it and made further changes, which unfortunately, you're not, on my computer, they came out in a different color. There was red and blue, so you could see which was new.
Which one are yours, green, blue?
Oh, there are green?
Black, red.
Well, maybe there are.
Yellow.
I brought yours with you.
The gist of it is, I'm comfortable with it now as far as going to public hearing. I think the Conservation Commission is too. If you want to advertise it and go forward with public hearing, and then when we get to the public hearing, you can take everybody, the public, through and explain what the changes are. If you want to take some time now, I can go through the changes that I made from their last draft, whichever you'd prefer.
Yes.
I want to go through it twice.
Okay, all right.
Please.
I put back, on page one, I put back the findings that were there. We had a bit more elaborate findings. They have been a bit too simplified, I thought, so I put back the findings. The council hereby finds and declares all that stuff came back from, that's your existing ordinance, okay? On page two, the definitions have been simplified, and, what can I say, it's a lawyer in me, but I thought they were too simple. I'd prefer to keep the definitions, so the new definitions that were simplified were taken out again, except for the sound variance, which is on page three. That's a new definition completely, and then all the rest of the definitions, and there are a couple of pages down here, starting on page four, but those definitions, those are the existing definitions which were kept. So the old definitions would stay, plus sound variance. So there's no real change there from what you have. Coming back to page three, measurement of sound, there was reference to if the location to take the measurement was impracticable, it could be taken at another location, and it required the procedures for taking it in a different location to be filed with the town clerk. Instead, I said such procedures shall be set forth in writing as part of any report, including a police report of a sound measurement. So that's really what we're looking for. It's not something we file with the town clerk, you know, if there's a 50-foot cliff, so I couldn't take it out the property line, I was 30 feet back when I took the measurement, we just want it in the report of the particular measurement. Page four is no change to what you last saw. Then we've got the old definitions. The only change there on page five, and the old definitions was, did simplify the definition of decibel. Made it a little less scientific, since we've got a meter anyway, or will have a meter. Then you move along to page seven, which is the exceptions to the ordinance, and the only change that I made to that was in what's G, 38-105-G, on the middle of page seven. It had said the emission of sound relative to permitted construction and demolition activities, and I just said the emission of sound relative to construction and demolition activities for which a building or demolition permit has been duly issued, because I didn't want there to be confusion of what permitted meant. And this was, this is actually something that's in the existing ordinance, but while I was going by it, I thought I'd fix it.
What if you have construction that doesn't require permits?
Then you wouldn't have an exception to, if you're doing something that minor, then you wouldn't be accepted from the sound, the noise ordinance. You'd be having to keep it within the decibel requirements of the noise ordinance. And that's not new, as I said, that's there. All I did was just, the permit, the word was there, I just kind of changed it to what it was. But I interpreted to mean the same thing even under the old one.
So if you're jackhammering concrete, and if it's, the noise is beyond the noise ordinance, and you're creating, if you're jackhammering, Jay, if you're jackhammering a sidewalk, and your neighbor calls and says that you're creating a nuisance because you're jackhammering your sidewalk, and you don't have a demolition permit to break up your sidewalk, and somebody comes down there with a decibel meter because you're jackhammering your sidewalk, and it's beyond the noise decibels, then you would be in violation, correct? Assuming that, Andy?
Yeah, yes. But not all construction activities are permitted.
That's correct.
So you could have something that could create a lot of havoc or noise, and it would not be a permitted activity.
Construction.
Construction.
Correct.
I mean, if you're out there drilling something through with a hammer drill.
That's correct.
And it's not something you need a permit to do.
That's correct.
It could exceed.
That's correct.
In that case, how would somebody, let's say they use a chainsaw to cut some limbs off of a tree, how would they do that without being in violation?
Chainsaw is covered under a separate.
Oh, completely. But I mean, even what they're talking about, something that's not, doesn't require a permit, but it could be considered construction, whether it's replacing some beams on a garage or someone that wouldn't.
I guess, you know, as you start talking about it, like, you know, I think if you're replacing beams on a garage, you should be getting, you should have a permit.
A building, a building, a building permit, you know, a lot of contractors use impact tools now.
Right.
So an air impact wrench would create a banging noise.
This may, this may lead people to be a little more diligent in obtaining building permits, because that will then take them under the exception to the noise ordinance.
There's a lot of small activity, though, that's not going to be required by a building permit.
That's probably not going to violate the noise ordinance. If you're using a drill, you know, certainly if you're inside, you're not going to do it. If you're using a drill on the outside, and again, as a practical matter, if you're drilling a couple of holes, you want to put up a flagpole, you know, into the side of your brick, which I've tried to do without success. Yeah. But you're only doing it for a few minutes anyway, and, you know, no one's going to call the police or stop you, or anything like that. You know, if you're putting a whole balcony on the side of your house, and you've got this impact drill and going to do it, again, that's where, you know, you probably should have a permit. If you're doing it enough that it's going to annoy someone to call about a noise disturbance, you probably should be having a permit.
What's the decibel level before a complaint can be registered?
It varies from zone to zone and the time of day.
And what.
And that's several pages on.
So that's, that's what we need to look at first, and see what's allowed and so forth, and then see what may not fit into the category, and then to see if there's a problem, and I think that's an easier way to handle it than try to come up with all the different.
All right. Changes from the last stuff that you've seen on the next stuff is, simply, on the middle of page eight, responsibility for violations and continuing violations, town solicitor has come back in, that had been taken out, it's back in, that's existing language. On the next one, sound variances. The changes that I made to this, this currently has it coming to the town council. Conservation Commission has it coming to the town council. I mean, you may decide that you may or, you know, you may want to do, you may want to take it to, send it to the zoning board instead or not, but at the moment, it is to the council and the existing ordinance, the version the Conservation Commission has to you, and I've left it that way. The only thing I did was cover on C, the fact about the filing fee is covering notice and advertising, and continuing on onto page nine, requiring notice by first-class mail to property owners within 200 feet of the real property boundary of the lot on which the noise source is located, and also confirming there'd be newspaper advertisement at least once seven days prior to the public hearing, which we have now also. So that if you have someone seeking a variance, at least there's notice. But by giving it only seven days prior, you don't have that long lag that we would otherwise have, you know, if you left it open as public hearing, one could read that as 21 days, and then you're basically making someone apply six weeks in advance. This was at least, you know, someone can come in on the council, you know, they can come in a week before, two weeks before the council meeting, get on the next council meeting, they don't have to wait a whole double cycle to get on. Okay. I also added in D on page nine, in the middle there, about the council being able to impose conditions, and that the decision would be recorded in land evidence records, so there'd be someplace where there's a permanent record of this. The penalties, I didn't really change anything that you had in front of you in A, except to add that every day, on the top of page 10, every day it continues to constitute a separate offense. And down towards the bottom of page 10, there's the thing about the dogs. I changed under number two there, it had the police officer fining, I changed it to a citation to the municipal court, and took away the discretion of the police chief to waive the fine. Now, police chiefs shouldn't be waiving fines, no matter what, on anything. So likewise, on the next page, top of page 11, there was a thing where the fines had been payable to the police department, I took that away, and took away the, it was there that the officer, the discretion of the officer, the, require the animals be removed from the town, I took that away as well, because there's really no authority for that. The only way that could be done would be injunctive relief through a court. The next section on alarms, I left, except I changed the fees, the fines on that, to make them consistent with the one, the dogs were 50, 75, and 100, and I changed it the same thing to make it that way for this, instead of 50, 60, and 70, make it 50, 75, and 100. As it would step up. And the next stuff on page 12, I've added some lawyerly language, a specific thing saying about, you know, what's prohibited, adding a lot of what we call boilerplate, and the same thing with the next session about the member, measurement of sound. And I kind of compare this, like, right, what we really need is enforcement, and that's why I'm going to take my digression. If you want to make a difference in what happens in the town with sound, what you really need to do is go out and buy a sound meter, if you don't have one, and I've heard that there may be one in the police department anyway, but in any case, then you've also got to pay to have someone come in and train the officers in the use of that sound meter and certify them. That's what you need to do, and then make sure they realize it's a priority, that that gets out of the station whenever there's a complaint, that it gets into the police cars and it's used. So that's what's really necessary. My comment about this section here, about the general provisions, is it's kind of like, you know, if someone stopped for drunk driving, they take a breathalyzer test, okay, it's .11, that's it, you're drunk, that's it, but if they refuse, the police still fall back on less precise things, such as, you know, walking the line and touching the nose. So these are the less precise things. I would not want to rely on it. If you really want to enforce it and get convictions, you got to have the noise meter, but I like to have the backup here as well. I also like to have this backup, so that if we're in court, someone, let's say the limit's 55 decibels and they're at 56, I want to have other factors, if we're prosecuting them, to be able to say, yes, Judge, they were only 56 to 55, but look at, you know, look at all the other things that were going on, and yes, we do reference those, those things to be considered in our ordinance. So that's why I put these two sections here in. On page 13, this is the actual table of the limits. The Conservation Commission had reduced it somewhat on the residential during the daytime, and then it had been 75 and 75 in the industrial and the highway commercial, that was the only change. I thought it should be consistent, I didn't think it should be louder in the highway commercial than the general and industrial. I thought if you're going to be reducing it, you should be reducing it off across the board. Now, you know, that'll be your policy decision, do you want to even reduce the thing at all, or not, or where, but at the moment, I was just trying to keep it consistent, so that it would be the same, not allow a higher, a higher decibel limit in a general commercial area than an industrial area. So, and I just cleaned up the language about, you know, we have public waterways, but that's not a zoning district. So I've said any zone where the noise is generated from a public waterway would be subject to that. Next page, page 14, middle of page D, revelry, that's gone. I don't think we can go after people for revelry anymore. It's kind of like, you know, shooting your blunderbuss in your fowling gun on the Sabbath, which is in our code, so while we were at it, I took that out. Now, I talked about the sound variance, you'll notice on page 15, there was the stuff that was being added, this was being added by the Conservation Commission about amplified permit filings, and you may decide you want it back, but it didn't seem to really make sense. We got our police department, they don't even know about it. If we have this, you know, someone, if they want to have any amplified stuff, they got to go to the police department. At best, we're going to have a form that they're going to have filled out, and it'll get tossed in a drawer. It's either got to go to someone else who will take an active role in enforcing it, or I've just struck it completely. My thought being, you either comply with the noise ordinance or you don't, whether it's amplified or not. You know, if you've got, if you've got 20 acres, and you've got some amplification, you have a party going on, and nobody can hear it, you know, and you're not above the limit at your property line, then so be it. By the same token, if you're, you know, right down in one of the more densely populated areas of town, and you have no amplification, but it's so loud you're higher than the limit, then it's the same thing. So it really doesn't matter whether it's amplified or not. So I did agree about simplifying, I took that out completely. You may, you know, you may disagree or agree with all this stuff, but that's, that was my thinking behind it. The rest of this is pretty much unchanged from what you saw. I'll just note this, page 16, there's this table about vehicle noise, and this comes from what's right in the code today, it's no change, but in looking at it, we kind of question, they're awfully high, so between now and the public hearing, I'm going to try to find out where those numbers came from once upon a time, and if those are really still the appropriate numbers that should be there. But at the moment, it's what's in the code now, and it's what's in the draft that was presented to you, and I didn't. And that's it. Those are the changes that I made.
And looking at the numbers that we have, the sound limits that we have placed at 60 in a residential or open space, that means a washing machine would be a violation in a residential zone, its decibel level is 65?
Well, if it's leaving the property, if your washing machine is out.
Well, no, I'm only saying, but I'm just using the noise level, if we're setting this at 60, you know, and I see what's above 60, but the only thing below it is moderate rainfall is 50.
Wind can be over 60.
Yeah. You know, you know what, you know what's difficult?
55 is pretty low.
Yeah, but you know what's difficult about, without knowing what, what a decibel level.
I know, I was going to ask that. Is there any way that we could have?
A demonstration.
A demonstration of what 65 decibels sound like?
Well, the thing you got to realize is that because it's logarithmic, it's, it's a lot more, I think it's like every three decibels, it doubles.
I think the table one on page four is very accurate and very timely, in terms of sounds, the level of sounds that are made in everyday life, so that will give you a reasonable thing to compare with table two, and also table three.
But all of these depend as well as the listener, how close they are to it, and what their, there are other acoustic.
If you're using your car back outside in your driveway, you know, I mean.
And you have your stereo system plugged in.
You know, I mean, this is, this could be really.
Yeah, then we got to start looking at the exemptions, because mowing your lawn is a violation in a residential zone, except there's an exemption to it, because, you know, it exceeds that level all the time, saying that a power lawnmower is 90 decibels, and the limit is 60.
But that's 90 if you're.
But that's, that's accepted now, as long as you don't do it between 9:00 PM and 7:00 AM, it's accepted.
That's what I'm saying, there's an exemption to it for that. But what I'm saying is, when we take some common, some common noise situations, you know, that are happening every day, how are we going, you know?
Do you have the shop staff on page seven, there are exceptions?
No, I know, I know there's exceptions.
But the lawnmower is included.
I understand that, but I'm trying to get this thing from a standpoint of what should be an acceptable level, if we start saying, well, everybody uses a lawnmower, so we exempt the lawnmower, we exempt this, we're getting into those construction situations, or particular tools somebody might use occasionally, that, you know.
And quite frankly, the tools are constantly evolving and changing, so what we might be dictating today might change a year from now.
But that's why I'm, I have the same question that Mr. Ruda had, was that, what is 60 decibels? I mean, without hearing a sound to say that this is what it is, and to see whether something's reasonable.
And it's understood that we can certainly see here that that's a moderate sound.
Yeah.
It's the sound of a sewing machine.
Yeah.
But that's at the property line, correct?
Yes.
Yeah.
It's everything defined at the property.
But I mean, I've, I've heard a sewing machine in the house that doesn't seem to be making a lot of noise. I, no, what I'm saying is, and if that's 60 decibels, there isn't much you're going to be able to do outside, but it isn't exceeding 60 decibels.
That's your weed whacker, that's, you know, if you're pouring out some brush, it just seems a little.
Whatever, whatever we do in passing an ordinance, we have to have an ordinance in that one is enforceable, and isn't going to create these neighborhood contests of you don't like the neighbor.
Yeah.
So I know that's, I know that's over 60 decibels, you know, let me call. And I think we have to take that in regard, the idea of controlling noise is something that we really have to take seriously, but we don't want to create something that's going to be a burden on the police department either. So that's why, hearing what those levels are.
Or used for vengeance.
Let me tell you what some of your neighboring towns have, because I have Barringtons and Bristols here, and you may not think Barrington's an appropriate compromise, you know, comparable, so let me.
I'm wanting to listen to whatever.
But they're the same, they're both the same, so their daytime residential is 60.
Yep.
Their nighttime residential is 50, so less than what is proposed here.
Yep.
Their business, limited in general, is 65 in the daytime and 55 in the nighttime. You're allowing, you know, at least 70 all the time. Their waterfront is 65 all the time, and then their industrial is 70 all the time. So you're kind of right in there, if not actually a little bit higher than what they've got.
Okay. I have another concern, if I could. I noticed in here that devices used in conjunction with places of religious worship shall be exempt from the operation.
What page do you want?
I'm sorry, it's the 18th page.
Okay.
18.
For the church bells.
Number B, oh, letter B, I'm sorry. Now, that doesn't, does that include, you know, whatever?
Whiteboards, bells.
No.
Activities that a church may have on their lawn?
No, it's only, you got to look up the title, it's only just the non-emergency signaling devices.
Oh, okay, I understand.
Bell, chime, siren, whistle, or similar device.
Okay.
Attended for non-emergency purposes. The rest of us only get to do it for one minute in any hour. The church could, you know, ring the bells for 15 minutes.
And that would be whether it's a bell, or a recorded sound of a bell, or something that's serving that purpose.
Something similar to a bell.
I would probably think that. I think that would come under similar device.
And then my other question was on page 14, which is section 38-14, the musical instruments and similar devices.
Mm-hmm.
No person shall operate, play, or permit the operation or playing of any drum, musical instrument, or similar device which produces sound in such a manner as to create a noise disturbance across the residential property line. I know we talked about this the last time, as Paul brought up, that the high school has band camp, they're out practicing with the snare drums and the trumpets and all of that, and that's in a residential zone. I just think that anything, anything related to activities around school, school activities or town sports activities should be exempt.
They join the parade around the neighborhood, that's where they practice.
Yep.
And my, my other concern was, you've got the child that practices, they practice at home with their music.
I've listened to all my neighbor's kids.
And you've got the neighbor next door who says the music now crosses the line, and I don't like the sound of Johnny Jones next door practicing the piano or playing the violin, and I don't like that.
Or the trumpet, or the saxophone.
Or the trumpet.
Yep.
But Jay, I want to go back to the one that you mentioned earlier, on page 17, on.
I got different language for you.
You do?
But the one that.
Wait a minute, Paul.
No, I mean, if you want to add it, you know, from another one of the ordinances in the other town, provided that nothing contained in this section show prohibited performances by ringing of bells on a tower, or by band or orchestra, in a hall, building, or in open air that is otherwise in compliance with local ordinances.
Because as this would read, I mean, the high school football games would need to get a variance, probably, because they have the band there, they have, they have.
And it might not cross the property line.
Well, the kids, the kids practice, the marching band.
No, no, I understand.
You know, the, the marching band, on nice days, they practice in the parking lot, and they will, they will practice up and down North Britton Road.
I see, that is not what I call substantive change, if we advertise the ordinance this way, we can add that at the public hearing.
And for what it's worth, that's what, that's what you got in there now anyways, since 1967.
Yeah.
The only change was.
But you know something, but now that we're going to, we're looking at a new ordinance, we're going to, we're, we're putting it under a microscope now, also, you know, you, you.
Somebody who didn't know it was there may know it's there next week.
That's right.
But getting, getting back to another one, Andy, on page 17, which is the one that Jay started to mention about, you know, what 30, section 38, no person shall operate or permit to operate any tool or equipment in construction, drilling, demolition, or preventive maintenance work, you know, with that one there, you know, that one there kind of scares me.
Not only that, for public service utilities, which create a noise disturbance across a residential real property boundary, meaning if they want to, if they're using a jackhammer in the street.
They're exempted later, right?
That's the B one.
Okay, they're exempt on the B, but why do we have at one place that says?
Let's say your neighbor can't get up at 7 o'clock on Saturday morning with a jackhammer.
But it talks about for public service utilities, you know, if you're going to exempt them somewhere, that section under construction.
Which page are you on?
17.
17, section 38-144, construction. Well, in the first one, we're talking about work for public service utilities, and then we say public service utilities are exempt.
The key is, in the first one, you're saying preventive maintenance work for public service utilities. Then you're exempting the emergency work or repair work performed by the government. The difference between repair and preventive maintenance.
But the point about, if you have to maintain, if you have to maintain a public service utility, you got to dig up.
Those guys are on the poles.
But you got to dig up my yard for the water line, you know, I can be ch- I, I can be charged with a violation of this noise ordinance, but if the public utility is doing it in the street, they're not.
Who says they're in the street? They're out on poles drilling and doing wires, they don't need to, they don't need to take-
Well, not technically before 7:00 o'clock in the morning.
No.
But that, then-
All those limits have timing.
Yes.
So you have to remember the timing part. The intent to protect the nighttime someone-
And I, and I do understand that, but- Construction usually takes place during the-
Under this, how would-
But, but under, under emergencies, I can see that anytime, but I, I, I don't, the way I'm reading this, you know, I think I could be out there during the daytime and-
Andy, how would preventive maintenance by, by utility get done if it can't be done unless it's-
I, I don't know, I, I didn't write this section, it's been here a while, so I-
I'd be up on a pole drilling, he's doing preventive maintenance, if he's raising wires, lowering them, that's-
And, and it's not something, I don't think there was anything substantive that was changed by the, by the Conservation Commission either, other than the numbering and so forth. So I guess it's something to look at, to think about, it, it seems a little bit, seems a little confusing the way it's written.
Yeah.
Yeah, very confusing.
So, I'm not, I'm not gonna defend it, I'll fix it.
When, when, one of the times in recent months that-
If, if you're gonna address the council, please sit at the table so that you use the microphones and everyone else can hear.
This is a special council meeting, this is not the public hearing, no, no.
We, we talked about this briefly in a, a meeting which began at 6:00. Shall I say I'm Pat Sullivan from the Conservation Commission?
Thank you.
I am. When, when that, when that item came up, um, a number of months ago, at one of the council meetings, as we began from time to time to discuss this, Knoll Berg said immediately, I don't think you need to include that in the noise ordinance, because there's a whole section in the zoning regulations which speaks to that. And so we brought that up tonight briefly, and that might be something that would clarify this. In other words, maybe there's some wording that is better, or, you know, easy to understand and similar. So that's just something to know.
Then bring it back into this, Pat. You're gonna be looking at the zoning ordinance and looking at that language and maybe updating it here?
Well, what I'm saying is, Knoll seemed to suggest that we didn't need it at all in the noise ordinance, because it was spoken to very clearly in the zoning regulations. Obviously, some of the other things included in the noise ordinance are spoken to in other areas as well, but if noise is involved, Conservation feels very strongly that we should at least allude to it in the noise ordinance.
Yeah, but I think the language just has to be clarified.
Yeah, right, right.
You know, I mean, I think maybe if you're taking our public service utilities-
What I'm saying is, there may be better language in the somewhere-
Right, if you're talking under construction, you're talking drilling, demo or, or preventive maintenance, which creates noise disturbance, if you take just the, for public service utilities, you know, work for public service utilities out of that, because you've exempted them, and I think it should be whether it's preventive maintenance or, you know, and I think that kind of clarifies it, so you're saying, under the construction end of this, they can't create that noise disturbance across a resident property line, but a public utility, because when, when they come out, it's, you know, whatever time it is, they're gonna, you know, they got a truck running to fix a line at night, and it may exceed, you know, I guess sometimes it's what's an emergency and what's preventive maintenance, but-
That might be a case where the timeframe is, is relevant. If it's an emergency, they obviously have to do it when they have to do it, whereas if it's maintenance, at least if you ban it between 7:00 and, whatever, that way it might make sense, it kind of means both, both concerns.
They're not out until the next emergency.
Mr. Teitz, what do you suggest in this regard?
Um, I, I think we just need to, we need to check the cross-reference at the zoning and see what that says, and I think maybe just clarify it.
Once again, these, these are issues we're gonna raise, but I don't think they have to be, you know, changed tonight or modified tonight in order to do the advertisement, you know, for this, because they are not considered to be substantive changes that would cause us to have to delay, you know, the, the adoption of an ordinance after a public hearing. Minor changes have never been, you know, an issue if we make them, and we're only talking about two or three small items in this ordinance.
Well, but we're, we're not even at that stage, we're just even now going to the public hearing.
No, no, what I'm saying is, this is, tonight we're here to see if we want to advertise for the public hearing. When we do advertise, we need a document that we're going to publish for the advertisement. And I'm saying, if there are only minor changes, and that's all we've discussed here tonight, that it isn't going to cause us to have to re-advertise in order to adopt it.
Agreed.
And that's my, that was my point. So I don't think we have to sit here and come up with the exact language on those three insignificant changes. So it may be prudent, if we don't have any more, is to take a vote on whether or not we wish to advertise for the public hearing.
I'm, I think I'd like to at least take this and look at it a little bit more before I'm ready to advertise for a public hearing, that's my opinion.
Okay.
That's me, and I'm just one hour six.
I've read this thing through a couple of times, and I've got some comments, but most of the items I have concerns with, I think we can address at the public hearing.
Yep.
That's just me.
The only concern would be if, if, the changes we talked about tonight, for example, if we were to make each of those, we won't have to re-advertise and hold another public, we can make those changes and still enact it.
Yeah, and, and I mean, in fact, when you get to the public hearing, you may make-
More changes.
And then you make big substantive changes at that point, too. You might decide to, you know, change the numbers one way or the other on the decibels, too.
So we could then enact it without having to go through that process.
Yeah, yeah, right, right. That's the only, that's the time when I, when I kind of get pushy and naggy and say, I want you to give the exact language, if you're at the public hearing and you're gonna adopt it.
Yes.
But at this point, absolutely no, no problem going forward.
I like going in with as little changes possible.
I think that the changes we have, or that we're looking at are, are very small, and I, I think we could go forward to the public hearing.
And at this time-
Now I would make a motion that we proceed to the public, public hearing on the noise ordinance.
Advertise.
Advertise to a public hearing.
Second.
We have a motion and second, to advertise the document for a public hearing, advertise the noise ordinance for a public hearing. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Against? Motion passes. The 42, I believe. Thank you. At this time, at, at, this time I entertain a motion to go into executive session.
Still more under?
Is this gonna be under section, town solicitor, section, section 42465A2, update to council on all litigation matters before the town?
Is there a second?
Second.
And to remain, and to remain, and to-
We'll take a vote, we'll take a vote first. All those in favor? It's unanimous.
And to remain under section 42465A1, discussion of personnel, police chief, notice sent.
Second. Discussion, seeing none, all those in favor?
And, yeah, and just, just for the record, and, and some people I noticed have asked, too, they, they wonder what that notice sent means on the agenda. All that means is that the police chief was sent a written notice informing him that this item might be discussed in executive session by the council, and that he had the right, if he wanted to, to require it to be held in open session. And that's part of the Open Meetings Act, whenever personnel is discussed. And as the law also requires, that we specifically add to the meetings this indication here, and I'll ask the clerk to confirm that written notice was sent to the chief on this one.
Sent and received.
Thank you.
Sent.
Yes, to executive session. I entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
They're not gonna do it, oh, adjourn the meeting, sorry.
We're in a regular meeting. Motion was made and seconded, all those in favor? Regular meeting is adjourned, we'll now open the workshop. Continued review and update of the 2007, 2008 budget.
The administrator's not there.
He should be right out. You're up.
Okay. You were given a updated version, members of the council, on the budget, and I want to give you a, pass you around a synopsis of the basic changes in this, if it is with your approval or consensus, this is a document I would like to give and added with the editorial con-
January 23rd?
January 23rd.
Thank you.
Put in your mailbox last week. Just to go over a, a few things with you, talking with the budget chair, Mr. Cotta, he was agreeable, if you want to send this one, it's the work, it's the most recent working document that they can work off of. The, the big changes go to page three. Originally, we were proposing on bringing a, a new inspector and taking a part-time person to full-time effective July 1st. I am now recommending that till December 31st, and I have a report here from the code enforcement officer on revenue changes that can be made to help offset this. I also put the change requested by Mr. Maviras under the planning department to show the big jump last year, you know, it was funded to start 11-1. There is one more mistake in there, and we're gonna have to make an adjustment. I forgot to put in there, under his contractual agreements, travel and seminars, I think that number is wrong, I gotta go back and double-check that, but he does, if not, we're okay. The other issue, under legal and services, trying to forecast what is coming at us in terms of potential litigation and litigation, I made a calculated decision to reduce that by $5,000. Fortunately, the, the number has dropped recently under litigation costs. Whether this will continue is to be seen, but last year we had forecasted at $44,000 based on experience, and then all of a sudden it skyrocketed starting in June. We seem to be trending back down to a $55,000 to $60,000 number. One thing in here, under probate court, and this is a budget that is under Nancy, and while I'm not here to take anybody's money away from them, especially the judge, I did supply you with a salary survey about a week ago, and probate judges, for the most part, were in the $4,000 to $5,000 range on average in Rhode Island, I'm not sure why, but I, I keep that out there. Under the Office of Treasurer, we have added $1,000 for consulting for GASP, and we still have in there part-time treasurer and finance officer. The unfunded liability account, which is on page seven, has been reduced to $15,000, a cut of $5,000. Under the fire department, we basically have made changes in some of the operating expenses. It's still running about 7% higher, and I'd like to talk about very quickly, because I know this is gonna be a question that's gonna come up, why the big jump in the salaries when, for the most part, salaries are, are on average of 3% to, 3% to 3.5%? The reason is, is last year you had up to five probationary firefighters, you've actually had a huge shift upwards from five who are paid less, substantially less salary than a full-scale firefighter, and you've had a couple move up to third class and a couple move up to second class, and it has literally swung the salary percentage out of what 3.5% average is, especially when you look at the captain, you can see he's, he has a negligible increase, and the lieutenant, I shouldn't say negligible, they're getting their salary increases, but it's the, it's the firefighters which skew the, the veteran status which skews the number a little bit. Police department, there's been some corrections. We've added six months of the school resource officer salary, somewhere along the line, we've got, somebody's gotta start plugging money in. The question is, is the school department gonna bear this cost, or is the town gonna bear this cost? Six months, in that period of January 1st to January 30th, typically he'd be working for the school department during that, almost that entire period of time, so, and just so you know, we've been funding that salary, though it's not been clear in the budget for about $18,000 to last, this year alone. I have reduced the operating expenses back to where there actually should be less than they were last year, I've gone through all of these line items. I did a six, the treasurer's office printed out a six-month review of the budget to see where we were financially, and I went back and looked at it historically, and because there was a salary mistake in the way the budget was originally put into the system last year, of almost $50,000, I think we can hold the cost on the operating expenses to offset some of that mathematical mistake or whatever it was. I gave you a report on that. Mr. Carroll, you're, just looking at your eyes, trying to, you seem to have like a question.
Go ahead, keep going.
All right. Public Works, which is on chapter, page 12. After talking with the Public Works Director, trying to reduce his budget a little bit, instead of taking out a salt, sand and gravel account, and historically, those monies, the drainage and the paving are usually put into a carry-forward every year, he recommended reducing the paving account, and let's see where the, where the, the winter season ends, then, you know, maybe do an extra street in paving. Boards and Commissions, which is on page 14, as you remember, there was appropriated $37,000, they made requests of $58,000, and I just, or, $57,000, excuse me. I made changes to take it back to pretty close to what it was in last year. Boards and Commissions, which originally, under the Conservation, wait, it's not Conservation, it was under Open Space, they were requesting $16,500 in their original amount of money, that should have been under capital, I took, I took the match app at this particular point in time, as a recommendation to you. The library, I outlined some shortfalls we were gonna have in the budget. Apparently, for some reason, we were paying FICA expenses in our FICA account, somewhere along the line, it got dropped out. That really should be shown as a grant and aid to fully account for how much the library is getting, so I put the FICA under the library to where, in my opinion, properly should be. The senior citizen services, we're not spending that much money on our elderly service busing and, and have not been, and I think $14,000, and that should almost be operating at the same cost as we were last year. The Recreation Commission has had some, just, some slight adjustments in salary accounts and looking at their expenses historically. Public Works, and I should say capital expenses, as much as I would like to see town hall air-conditioned, the most recent price that came in the other day was pushing now close to $50,000 from the original estimate, giving via $30,000. What I've got there now is an estimate to just centrally air this portion of the building with an air conditioning system, which would allow at least our offices- with an air conditioning system, which would allow at least our offices to leave their doors open during the hot weather, instead of having, you come into Town Hall, it's a nice impression, every door is closed and it's hot as it can be inside here. And any commission member that has met, Trump Board or Commission, and you all know yourselves, we end up turning the air conditioning system off here because it just is too noisy. So hopefully, $10,000 should allow us to put, and while I'd like to see $50,000 in there, I think we're going to have to go to various foundations and help us, but we need to have at least some money set aside and show them a plan on how we're going to match a $300,000 grant, or they'll never give us serious consideration. And the Cassa Hill Cemetery Commission, we took, I took their road construction money out. In my opinion, I know that they consider those roads as town streets. They're really not. They should be able to cover it under their operating expenses. I, I think that's going to be an issue that's not going to make some people happy. So, right now, we're still over budget, but it's another $200,000 dollars off the budget. At this point, we're putting, if you're agreeable, we'll put a submittal into the, to the Budget Commission of $13,500. And just for some basic knowledge, the debt service numbers on the back on page nine, they're not, they may not be the most accurate. I mean, this is an issue that's, it's a moving target, especially when we decide to go out to, the town decides to go out, the Treasurer decides to go out to do the school bonds. But these were, these are still working numbers. And I think Mr. Robert wants to come forward and talk a little bit about property tax. There's been a lot of discussions. You want to just, before we go on that, you, you have any questions?
No. I think you hear from the Department head side of here that wants to be heard first.
Well, one of the questions has been on the issue of property tax and how this, the tax levy is going to be levied and, and how it's going to work this year. And I've given you a copy of a report about two or three weeks ago. And Mr. Robert has been following up on it. And I've given you a handout from, I believe this is Mr. Schaefer's.
Peter Schaefer.
Peter Schaefer. So.
The, the discussion has been, late in the session last year, the General Assembly passed Senate Bill 3050, which basically has reduced the cap from 5.5% to 5.25%. So that's one element of 3050. But the, one of, for my office, one of the big factors is that the growth of the town, any new construction is longer factored in to levy. Basically, at 5.25%, that is a simple calculation from last year's total levy to this year's total levy. So when, in the past, you have been looking for what the new construction value of the town is, that doesn't play a factor at all anymore. So basically, that notice from Peter Schaefer kind of goes through exactly what 3050 does. I do have a summary memo available that if you wish to take a look at that, exactly what that means to the town of Tibbetts. I have estimated, based on our historic growth, what our potential levy could have been versus what the state mandate levy is now. And it's approximately $260,000 less than what we could have realized if we could include the growth.
Now, Dave, I know you and I talked about this the other day. There is some, maybe misunderstanding of what the legislature was trying to pass. And there seems to be some question of whether the legislature may revisit that this year or is, or where are they with that?
Last conversation I had with Jim Savage from Municipal Affairs was, once they pass 3050, cities and towns now are realizing that because of the limited potential of including growth, they are now taking a look at revisiting that issue. But there's been no promises, no nothing. All they're saying is that, his official word was that they're going to try to tweak it. Who knows what that means? But at this point, we have to live by 3050 has-is and it is simply just a simple calculation of 525 on last year's levy.
Which means we can increase the budget totally, both school and town services by $1,382,581.
Correct. Right. Now, the question also comes is to, does the Town Council send a letter to the legislators and discuss this issue of whether this can be amended in this current session and take place before, in this, as soon as possible, changes in the law? Because basically, we just lost $260,000 in, when you look at it on average, from a historic standpoint, we just lost $260,000.
We've lost the ability to generate.
Generate $260,000.
Of that 260, approximately 70% of that 260 is contributed to the growth. The other 30% would be the reduction from 5.5% to 5.25%.
Now, is this, is this, are these numbers taken into consideration, the debt service? Or we ask for a waiver for debt service?
We, you would have the availability to waiver the debt service. There's a question that something else may be able to be waived, but definitely the debt service.
Is that going to require action by the council to send a, a letter to the Department of Administration?
I think what we'll do is come to you at your next meeting and ask to send a letter. But what they're going to, what they typically asked last year was, we need a closer approval, closer to the Financial Town Meeting, which means the Budget Committee is going to have to, may have to complete their work earlier to meet that window of time. And then there's always the legal question is, how much do the voters have the authority? Have the electors have the authority at the Financial Town Meeting just to raise it if they decide to raise it? But I think it works better from a process as to let the state know upfront, this is where we are. And I think Mr. Amerantis would probably, I can't speak for him, but I would imagine he would do the same thing we did last year. Because as you may recall, we sent a letter, the notification, we are considering doing it. We never had to do it.
But even with the new legislation, the process is still the same in the sense that the council requests the waiver and then it gets approved by, is it Municipal Affairs? Or that that process is still the same for the debt service waiver?
Yes.
Andy, you have a number now that tells us how much over the 5.5% increase we are going forward with, proposing to go forward with?
I don't, I don't want to put a number out there right now because I haven't talked with the school department to see if, if they've taken any more cutting of their, their numbers. Because once the number gets out there, it's out there.
Well, they're limited to 5.5, are they not? Or is it 5.2?
5.25.
5.25.
Same as we are.
And they cannot present a budget higher than 5.25.
And, and they've got, I mean, you saw their requests, budget requests. And I don't have it in front of me right now, but I believe it was 1.7 million increase over last year, somewhere in that. And I think under, in terms of what they were budgeted to spend, they should, they're, they have about a half billion dollars to cut.
They've got half a million to cut.
Half a million.
It's more like $800,000 to cut.
Okay. You've got that in front, I don't, I don't have mine. Yeah, the question, once again, comes down to the issue of fees. Andy is scheduled to meet with Nancy sometime this week and Gareth to go over one more time before we come back with proposed fee increases on revenue. My goal is still for you to recommend to the Budget Committee what you think the fees are going to be available or revenues are going to be available. You know, we know that we've been doing some tracking across the board. And I really just want to talk about the top portion of this page on some revenues. And here's, here's Dave's report too, while you're passing stuff around. And, and for the record, what I've given you was what was, was a work document that was done in December. And I've still got to go back and track the numbers. One of the problems that we have in formulating revenue forecasts is that historically, the town has not been doing what's called a CAFRA, which is taking 10 years of financial doc data and plugging it into a formula where you can track trends. We used to do one, we haven't been doing one. This is another advantage for a financial officer to put 10 years' worth of data. When you have an audit done, you have an audit done for the year you're in. It's a snapshot, but it's not going out and looking at the finances of the town from a number of year period like a CAFRA study would be. I went and looked at, for instance, historical numbers that we've been receiving in, in school aid. Last year, you received a 4.8%. Some years, it's 2%, some years, it's 5%, some years, it's 3%. And I was playing, frankly, playing around with some numbers, looking at this and giving some idea where these revenues may be going. Same thing with miscellaneous tuitions. Last year, you took in more in miscellaneous tuitions than you did the year before. Now, will that trend continue? I may have a better picture in another couple months from financial data. School Department Housing Aid, right now, we're down and I'm not sure why unless we just haven't gotten a payment from the state yet. Interest on taxes, when I did this number, we were down. Now, all of a sudden, we've rebounded. Interest on town investments, that number may be able to go higher if interest rates stay up. Department fees and permits, that's a number that we're obviously are going to be working on. Probate courting and municipal court revenues. For instance, if the judge, and I'm not trying to tell a judge how to do his business in municipal court, but if a judge decides to knock down tickets to court fee, court fines, it has an impact. Fire rescue billings, one of the things that's in the budget is to increase the hours for the clerk over there, to be more aggressive in the billing. And the fire chief will tell you, his call numbers are up. We, you know, the more ambulance runs we run and the faster we get those invoices out, the greater the chance we get reimbursement on this in a faster way. And with the call, increase in calls going, ambulance calls, and Chief, you're up, what, at least 400 calls this year?
Yes, sir.
Of all sorts, not just ambulance, but of all sorts.
Yes, sir.
Going down, tower lease rentals, you know, it looks like we're closer to 114 than we've been budgeting at 105. Motor vehicle phase out, that's not changed. Meal and beverage tax, up till last year, we weren't accounting for that. We may hit $140,000 this year, based on where our revenues. Calpine, Tibbetts and Power Associates, $652,000 is the number that will take place starting from January 1st this year to December 31st. That's a tax stabilization agreement for everybody to remember, where a, there's a formula that has to be calculated based on a CPI in Boston for clerical workers, am I not correct?
Something like that.
Something like that. And that's, you know, we're projecting 652. Now, the question is, we might want to be able to add two or at least 3% on top of that to account for the final six months of the year. I didn't do anything on new construction and starwoods because this is an issue that's been very complicated because we've changed how we account for starwoods. Inventory tax is going to go down and the reason why, that is a sunsetting tax. Real estate taxes, we just kept, left the number where they were, but you've already been able to see, you can add 1.0, almost $1.4 million to that number. These other numbers, I want to hold in abeyance right now. But we don't account, for instance, as a revenue in the budget, senior citizen grant, which pays for our deputy. We don't account for that as revenue in the budget. The question is, is, are we, you know, how we account for revenues from the Recreation Commission? Another fee that I'm going to be recommending to you for discussion is to put a white good fee on. When you approve the trash contract, you know, we pick up from a limited number of households, 1,000, what we believe, we've been picking up 1,000 white goods. This is the one item that residents really do have an option to have someone else pick up. If you buy an appliance from Lowe's or Home Depot or whomever, they will charge you a fee to take it out of your house. We do it for free and now we're paying for it in the contract. Should we be charging a $25 fee, which will cover our cost and administrative expense? That would reduce the cost of trash service from 560, or 560, yeah, 560 down to 535. Another one is, and I just found this out Thursday, we're paying.
It's only a $20,000 line, I believe.
It's a $20,000 cost item, but by the time you hand tickets out, have someone responsibility to make sure they're, they're issued and printing and purchasing, I can promise you, you're probably going to be around $23,000, right, you know, that. And then you also, just so you know, you do have a CPI on that agreement. It goes up a certain percentage each year. Another thing that I just found Thursday, I mean, Wednesday of last week, we do not charge enough, in my opinion, for civic duty markup. Because we are paying a premium rate for our workman's comp for that, according to our local trust. And we have not accounted fully for that cost. So instead of charging, I believe it's 12% markup, we may need to charge a 25% markup. And that would, you know, when you're looking at, I believe it was $100,000 in, in billings for that service, that's another $13,000 in revenue. I mean, you're going to be able to make up some of this revenue. And as I mentioned before, if we can redeploy our, our forces a little bit, there may be some other savings. But I think it's going to be still another, once Nancy and her, her meeting with Andy gets settled, then we'll be able to give you some real issues, numbers about raising certain fees. But I would certainly want to discuss raising the, of having a white goods fee. It's a more limited service versus what the other trash services that we provide. And I know Bob is working on fees for the Fire Marshal.
If you wouldn't mind.
Yeah.
I would respectfully request that. I had gotten that call from you this morning and I, I've been in class all day in Grafton Mass. I put a preliminary together, but I really would like respectfully ask for more time to be able to sit and talk with you about that.
I also want to bring up one other issue, and it may have been a miscommunication on, on our part about the Fire Marshal and how it works. I'm not ready to discuss it today, but I would like to have, you're going to have a report sometime next week because I, you know, sometimes things aren't always the way they appear to be in the law. And I want to make sure you have a full report because I don't want anybody to have any misunderstanding if they go and read state law. And Dave's. And Dave's, and Bob's working on that report for my review before it is submitted to you. Because I want to get any questions cleared up in your minds. I also have from Gareth, some fees that he is proposing, which is on page three.
This one.
It was in the packet? Okay, I didn't know whether it had gotten there or not. But what I would like to do is take a council meeting, when the entire department heads are here, and take one of those regular scheduled department council meetings, maybe in February, when we'll have more data. And by that time, Nancy's report with the town attorney should be done, and Gareth can be able to give you rock-solid numbers.
On the fees and all this, the, all the revenue that's on this document that you're now putting as part of the budget, that currently just goes into the general fund now?
Some of it just goes into the general fund. I mean, this is part of the audit. I think the auditor, as he completes his audit report, is going to be giving you some recommendations to, and that should be completed by mid-February. So that's why I also want to have his report available to give you on how you should be accounting for some of these revenues.
By putting it into, using against the budget versus putting the general fund, it allows the, more things in the budget to be used without having, exceeding the cap.
Right.
Well, currently, all our fees go into the general fund.
Everything goes into the general--
Everything, everything--
Everything goes into the general fund. It's just the way you account for it, and it's, you know, and what I'm going to be recommending is a gradual change on how you account for your fees. And I think that's where the auditor, last time I finished my discussion with him, is going to be recommending on how we account for some of these revenues. And I also think, you know, it gives a clearer picture to the residents, especially at the budget process, that they understand that, for instance, all of your costs for operating the harbor commission are covered in mooring fees. There is no real cost to the taxpayers. You know, it shows where we are subsidizing and where we are not in our property tax rate, which I think creates a little bit more clarity that, you know, these, this organization or this group is paying their share or covering their costs, especially when it comes to planning and zoning and code enforcement. I mean, you know, you went out and hired a new planner, I'm sure there's going to be other changes that are going to come about in the future. I mean, you know, we, when you look at the fire department's budget, there's a good example, if you look at it from the way we're doing it now, and that's the change we're trying to move away, you look at the fire department, and you see a cost of running the fire department of $2.2 million. Well, that's not really correct, because they collect $250,000, $260,000 in fees, but it's not shown there. And that's why we tried to put some of the editorial comment in, is to show that they are collecting fees to offset their cost. And depending on which way we go, we can, or you go as the elected officials and the electors of the town budget process, we can place less weight on raising taxes, especially when you're looking at school construction costs that are going to have to be dealt with.
Just for clarification, the fire department itself doesn't generate, you know, the fire department is for putting out fires, but the rescue service generates, you know, we do third-party billing for the rescue. So therefore, that portion of the fire department, Chief, correct me if I'm wrong, you know, the fire department itself does not, is not a billable department in it.
No, it's not a billable--
But the rescue, the rescue portion of the fire department has third-party billing, you know, so--
But we require all of our firefighters to be EMT certified.
Absolutely.
And that is, adds a substantial cost.
Absolutely.
And we are not simply a fire service--
They could do third-party billing for that, you know, because we get some money coming back, you know.
But we're not simply a firefighter. You know, the school department costs X millions of dollars. The bulk of the property taxes go to the school department. I mean, because it's a mandate, we have to educate our children. But the cost of running a municipal side of government may not be as great as people's impressions are, because we have an opportunity, more fee revenue generating opportunities than the school department does. School department's limited to what they can do. But that's the purpose, is to make sure that everybody understands what we're doing. It's a clearer process, it's a more understandable process, and that there's no great mystery to it. So if it's agreeable, I would probably like the second meeting in January, pending that the auditor is complete, to come back with--
February?
February, excuse me, February, to talk to you more about this.
My only concern with presenting it like this, I mean, if you look at the numbers roughly, it looks like the real estate tax, the numbers, numbers to numbers, real estate tax funds the schools. I mean, $25 million in real estate taxes, and the schools are roughly $25 million.
Well, if you also look at, if you pull your docket out from last year, it's going to show, that's where those numbers came from. The docket, and we may follow the docket formula, and just include that as an attachment, a clearer way.
Yeah, there's a $5 million reimbursement from the state.
I see that, but I mean, if people look, if you look at just numbers and numbers--
I understand.
--of course, some people are going to look at this docket, and that's how they're going to look at it.
I think the new process of trying to break these things down and show people where numbers come from, kind of eliminate that, you know, they're funding the entire thing. I think it's all in perspective, and I think a new approach to the budget and putting our numbers in in a different way is a positive approach. Because I think the old docket's misleading, had no idea what is coming from you, threw a revenue number, which was a general lumped revenues. And the budget committee anticipates revenues, and basically is giving you that money to use prior to you collecting it. So the thought that all the fees collected going into the general fund, actually, is something that you're not looking at, because when you look at budgets in the past, they've taken into account revenues, and you're using them revenues as they come in. Then they take whatever surplus is left and apply it to the budget based on what's there. So you're going to get a much clearer idea by looking at it in this kind of a format of where those revenues are coming from. And when you see the building permits generated $125,000, and you look at what your fees are per square foot, and you look at what construction costs have changed, you know, over the time we've enacted those fees, it is about time that you raise that, you know, per square foot fee in that particular department. And when you start showing, you know, you get $125,000 in a building department, and you look at the expenses, you can say, our building department really doesn't cost us a lot of money. You can figure out, as Glenn has said, which of our departments, we don't have a way to generate money to run a police department. Public safety is public safety. You know, it's not one that you can generate, you know, we sent a fire truck out, we're going to charge you 500 bucks, you know, we did this. Those, you know, a necessary service, much as the schools are. But you have to show people--
I don't disagree.
No, I'm just saying, but you have to show the people, I think, in the breakdown of where the rest of the general government is not costing them a ton of money, you know, and where misconceptions are. I think it breaks down some of the misconceptions, and I think that's the first thing you need to do to build healthy budgets.
I mean, the, you know, we had this discussion, as you may recall, on hazardous materials. We've reduced that number because we want to account for what revenue we anticipate bringing in when we try to collect for reimbursement on hazardous materials. But if you looked at it the way we were presenting it, it's simply we're spending X thousands of dollars and making no attempt to collect it. And government has changed a lot, and I think we need to explain that we are going out, we have these various, you know, these fees, and we have new people moving into the community, and maybe we need to be clearer on how we present it, revenues. It's not an attempt to make, you know, to make the schools look like they're doing this, or the town government's doing this, it's just to try to get a clearer presentation on revenues.
I'm just saying, we need to be careful when we present this, so that we don't leave the schools hanging out.
I have no intention, I can tell you right now, and I'll make it crystal clear, I have no intention of hanging anybody out. My job is hopefully to present something that is easier and clearer to understand. I'd rather have 16,000 well-informed people and arguing clearly what, in a clearer presentation, than have a lot of misconceptions and misunderstandings of what we're doing.
Glenn, will you be sitting down with Rob any time soon and going over some of those issues you brought up before? Maybe this would be a time to maybe--
Well, I need to meet not only with Robin, but Bill Ririck. I mean, Bill is, Bill is the superintendent. And we have talked about issues that need to be addressed, and the governor's budget should be unveiled shortly. I've been out of touch for the last couple days, but it may have been already presented, so I may be wrong. But we're waiting for the budget to be presented, and that'll, you know, as soon as that's presented, the Rhode Island League of Cities and Towns does a very thorough analysis, and will probably have it that afternoon. That's how fast they review the governor's budget, see what impact it's going to be on municipal government. And that'll help present a clearer picture to you in February, too.
Let me, let me say that I would have no objection to having a list of revenues attached to the docket, or in some way inform the public of the revenues, as detailed as possible. That would be great. But I think that if we begin to include it in the docket, and let's say the building inspector, he has expenses of $100,000, and he has income of $200,000, therefore, we can give him another inspector, another clerk, because he's making the money. And that fails to take into consideration that departments that don't have the ability or the opportunity to raise revenue. And I think it'll create, I can just see the financial town meeting now getting into tremendous arguments over some kind of proposals such as that.
Yeah, department by department.
Yeah. The list, fine, I believe, and everybody believes in open government, and we want them to know what's going on. I have no objection to that.
But please remember, we just can't simply raise building fees as a simple revenue generator for the town. We'll have other issues with the builders, and they're going to come forward and challenge us. The purpose of raising the fees is to offset the cost of bringing the inspector in, which I think, I know you all understand, with the purpose of showing, if we do this, we can address some of the concerns that we are constantly hearing from the residents, which is, we're not being proactive. That's the purpose. I think it's like anything else, it's how you explain it, and so they understand. Because I understand, obviously, the fire, DPW, police, they are not revenue generating for the most part. They have opportunities to increase revenues from certain fees, but we're never, ever going to cover the cost of running a police department or a fire department or a DPW.
But if you support an argument for additional staffing based on the fees that are generated there, I forgot my point. It still went back to pretty much what I said before, that it's going to, it's just going to create misunderstandings, not clear them, it's going to create them. And it's just going to make the financial town meeting a hell of a lot more complicated. Give them the information, and I think we should be satisfied with that.
Well, you know, as I said, you've seen the editorial comment, which will be finalized. That document will be available to the public, so they can start looking at it in the future, to at least give them an opportunity. And we do want to do some type of slideshow, like we did for the revow, as you may remember, that would be continuous up at the library to do an education. I don't know whether we're going to be on camera again, that we were the last time, a lot of people seemed to enjoy that. They learned a great deal more about the budgeting process and what the town was trying to do. But I'll just leave it at that.
Glenn, what was the $15,000 again for Fogland? Do you recall?
Fogland, what they want to do is a survey. The purpose of the survey is, a lot of questions, it's something that needs to be done. What we can afford to do it is another story. But it's a detailed survey of the Fogland area, where everything is, so that when we go down there and do something, we don't get telephone calls, or we get calls from CRMC that we have done something illegal down there, we can show, well, here's where it is, it's documented of what we're doing. And I know Mr. Webster also strongly supports this, I know Mr. Ramikowski supports this, of getting a detailed survey down there. It's not GIS mapping, it's a detailed survey.
But it also, it also was for grant applications, because without them, we couldn't apply--
No, this one, this is not, this is not. They applied for a grant application last year, and it fell through. This is something different.
Tom Raymatowski, we have a grant from DEM for $12,500 that's associated with this effort. It's a two-part effort. We need to get an accurate map. And the DEM money goes to paying experts to come in and map in the wetlands, map in these features, and also give us reports about how we should be managing the area, what can be changed, what shouldn't be changed, things of that sort, so we can once and for all get the long-term management plan going, which was one of the goals that the council, in fact, assigned the group. We've been trying to do it through grants several times, I've written several proposals, and we always run into the trouble, no one wants to pay for the map. So we decided to work it in this time as the match from the town, and use this other money to do the expertise and things of that sort, and they're agreeable to spend the money that way.
Yeah, but, but we, even if we couldn't get the match on that, we still need to get the maps done. And the maps are something we can't get a match on, we just want to use it as a match against something else.
And it's also needed if Mr. Webster needs to do the road or repair something down there, he needs that, we don't have it now, and CRMC is saying, you've got to have something more than a hand scan. So it serves the town in that way as well.
Yes, sir.
Instead of spending $10,000 on central air conditioning here, I'd rather see the $10,000 go to one of the boards or commissions, or go to senior center, or to one of our departments, or to the police, or fire, or something like that, any one of their small accounts. I just think that we probably could afford to do without the central air conditioning in this room for another year. That's my opinion.
Anyone have anything else? May I ask the chair, is there a consensus to send this most recent version forward, and do we want to eliminate the $10,000?
It's a choice.
We can't tell if we can give you a consensus. I think we need to send some document forward, and again, with the same way we did last year, saying it was a working document, it would still be working progress, a work in progress, and continue to work on it in that fashion.
I think the big issue that they're going to be looking for, for guidance for you is revenues.
Mr. Chair, what about the town line GIS? At the last meeting, it said if it wasn't there, it was going to be put back in. Has that been determined whether or not we--
It's not been determined yet. It, it should have been there. According to everything, that last year's was the third payment. I don't know if one year it wasn't carried forward or not, and it was never intended to be a carry-forward.
No, it wasn't, it was a, it was a--
It was restricted.
First, it was a restricted account, yeah, three years and $9,000.
Three years.
Yeah, that would have been the third year.
I thought this was the third year.
Well, I think, thought last year, I was told last year was the third. Let us--
It's not recommended in this budget.
I think we need to figure that out, because we did agree to get that done, and we need to get those monies back there, so it can--
If I can get the answer from the treasurer by tomorrow, because I know we're meeting, it'll, that will go back in, if that's, but it was my understanding, last year was the third year of the payment.
Because that, that will address some of the issues in the, in the building department also. When we get the town mapped, we're going to be able to then see a lot of those places that have illegally done something, although, once you have that mapping done, you're going to know when this changes to anything.
I don't think, I mean, I don't disagree with it. I mean, I know that I asked Mr. Spencer to meet with Ms. Eva to talk about, to talk about other potential, what we've done so far. about other potential, what we've done so far, because he was trying, going to look at having MIT assist us, since he's a graduate alumni of that institution.
Anyone have anything else?
We should just close this workshop. Have a good night.
Thank you.